Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the 119 session, 11th council, the special meeting tonight. At this time, I don't need a motion for to excuse any council people because they're on route. They're just running a little late, so they should be here for Councilman Nicholson and Councilman McGinnis. Roll call.
Carrington.
Yes. Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis. Nicholson. Parker.
Here.
Rutherford. Mr. President, you have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, can I have a motion? I'm sorry. Well, we have to change the whole agenda because it's not on the agenda, so you want me to amend the agenda? It's up to you. Okay.
I make a motion to amend the agenda, so, okay.
Well, I'm gonna get there.
Okay, cool beans.
Can I get a motion to approve to agenda?
I motion.
Support.
It's outside.
Come on, guys. Let's keep, let's keep order. At this time, is any amendments to the, to tonight's agenda? Second by who? It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford and second by Councilman Parker to amend the agenda to add a prayer, and we can actually add that. It's right before agenda address. Roll call, please.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes. At this time, can I, roll call to approve the amended agenda?
So move.
We already, it's already been moved.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Uh, thank you. At this time, Pastor Parker, prayer.
Thank you. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, we come this evening first giving you thanks for the marvelous day that you have allowed us to enjoy. We thank you for your presence. We thank you for your love. We thank you for your concern. And precious God, our Father, we ask now that you would guide our thoughts, our hearts, and our minds as we can, as we discuss the burdens that you have placed on our hearts today, Lord God. We ask that you would move in this place that we will be in one accord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Uh, thank you. At this time, we have agenda address. You have two minutes to address the council. Mr. Kermit Williams.
Okay. Good evening, Pro Tem Carrington, city council members, mayor and deputy mayor. Just had a couple of quick questions in regards to the road millage. Really wanna hear, I thought it was gonna be a presentation first before agenda address, but my major questions is timeline, true cost, and what streets would be taken care of? Those are the three questions that I have forward, and I know there's a lot of people that are interested about that. And then can you break down what each section would look like in that proposal? Also, if it doesn't make the ballot or the council votes are down today, what steps would be triggered? Then are you gonna go back after it at a later date, or what is the plan? Thank you.
Next would be Ms. Patrice Waterman.
Good evening, members of council, executive, office. My former colleague, Mr. Williams, came up and asked us several of them that I was gonna ask, but my major is how did this come to, how did this proposal come to be, and I need to know the outline of this proposal? And, you know, I guess I question that there are several things going on in this city that have not come to fruition, and now you wanna bring a bond on the citizens of Pontiac? I just need to know what the cost is going to be to our, our citizens of Pontiac? How long is this bond supposed to go out for? I know in previous, when we were in council, it was going to take $200 million to cover the roads in the city of Pontiac, and I'm hoping that if this was to be, are these going to be local streets? Are they going to be going into subdivisions? How are you going to outline it? Is it going to, what districts are going to be covered? It's just a whole lot of questions that need to be answered, and I do believe if something like this was supposed to be rolled out, we should have had town hall meetings so everybody would be able to understand what this millage is going to incur. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waterman. Mr. Renee Beckley?
My problem is, you asked for $114 million. You're about to tax everybody out of the city with that. We, we don't have money to pay that. We're not made of money. This is not Bloomfield Hills, and they probably would not want it. Or any gross point of, all those rich cities. You, no. You had to tax, I guess, six months after you got into office, and you asked for another one. That is too excessive, and you know better. And Tim, you know, if that goes, you gonna, you start paying it, you gonna slip back to Auburn Hills to live. So, and then you got the south side, you got a 911 situation, they blocked in. Something catch a fire and it jumped from house to house. The fire department can't get there in time because you got everything blocked off. They gotta go all the way around. I mean, you don't, you start, I mean, you got both sides. You got Bagley and Franklin Road blocked off on both sides, the streets in between. That does not make sense. Now you have the Phoenix Center blocked off, and now you got the south, I guess, the south side of Bagley. So those people are basically trapped. Some mass shooter coming there, like they did in Philadelphia, start popping. They have no place to go. They have no place to run in their cars. But you got them blocked in. You asked for $114 million, asked the poor city where you have people standing in the food line getting clothes, all wrapped around buildings. And you asked them for them to pay 114 million in a road millage? You could do a little piece at a time that's, that's common sense. Now, if you ask for 14 million dollars, it might pass. For 100, no triple-digit budget in Pontiac, Michigan. Think about it. You, every week I see something, agenda amendment, transfer, this fund to that fund, this fund, that fund. You really don't have the money. Don't ask this for. I'm not voting for 114 million because the school did one, well, that once, I guess it was 146. I'm tired of these triple-digit villages and taxes. I don't pay taxes.
That does conclude your time.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Beckley. Mr. Chris Northcross.
Good evening, Chris Northcross, 168 Astrowood. You know, I've driven on streets here in Pontiac and been around streets on Pontiac for over 70 years, and I've used them. And I know they have to be replenished and replaced. I was here, I'm here tonight to just hear what the plan is. So, I'm, I'm open, I've got an open mind, so I was just hoping to hear what the plan is for replacing and replenishing and upgrading our streets and improving our whole transportation system here.
Thank you, Mr. Northcross. Ms. Irene Wright?
Good afternoon. I come here, first of all, to say thank you for what you've done, thank you for what you're gonna do. However, given the fact that we're talking about a millage that will encumber us for the next 30 years, I have problems with that. First of all, as a landowner and property owner, you know, I take great pride in my city. I understand the fact that we need new roads. That's never been an issue. But I think the format that you're using is gonna cost us too much. And let me first of all, give you an example. I wanna put Marie Antoinette over on this side, okay? As landlords now and as homeowners, the many people that are in here are older people. We probably could afford that, but if you're looking for $30 million, I would like to see generational wealth with my kids. I do not want them to be encumbered for something that I took part of. There are other parts that I'm concerned about. If you taking that much money, how are you gonna expend it? Are you gonna keep some for two, five, 15, 30 years, or are you gonna try to spend it all at one time? Impact and intentions are thoroughly different, and I'm quite sure the mayor, the deputy mayor had a lot of their impact, but the impact on us is gonna be completely, completely resolved to the point that we may lose our houses. Nobody's thinking about that. If we do not pay those taxes, each year they go up. We don't pay those taxes, we're gonna lose our, not myself, because probably I won't be here, but my children. I'm more concerned about what's gonna happen to them than anything else. Now, I'm gonna take back Marie Antoinette. Marie Antoinette never listened to the people. She did what she wanted to do, and they beheaded her. So for you guys, please listen. I'm not saying you don't have to do it. I'm just saying, take it in instrumental steps. Look at what the impact is gonna be for us. We don't have the type of money that this will cost. And so with that, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Wright. Ms. Lynda Watson. And then Carlton Jones is on deck.
I'm piggybacking on this right. I am not for a bond issue at this time. There's not enough information that has been presented. One thing that I learned from the other village when they were trying to do the transportation thing, the city of Pontiac was down the road five or six years, and you wanted us to do a mill for that for five years, and we have nothing? And now you wanna make us responsible for 100, I guess, 14 million dollars? Can you tell me the plan? What streets are gonna be taken care of? You burden us, and you give tax abatements to outsiders, but what do you do for the citizens? Now, Mayor Grimal, before you got in office and last year, I asked you about that home exemption for those of us who have kept our properties for our children. We're already paying the higher tax rate. You do not need to charge us rental. Do you really think we would let our property go down with our children living in it? If we have a problem with our children, we can take care of it. Do something for us for a change. You bring everybody in, you get from tax abatements, they tell you they're gonna bring this many jobs. But do you have a contract compliance officer to see if they actually bring the people and maintain them? No. We're the first ones hired and the first ones laid off. So we really don't have those jobs that they always claim that they're giving us.
That does conclude your time.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Mr. Jones.
Good evening. Um, I wanna say that truly, some of us truly understand this process, and we realize this right now is not the vote. We realize this is the options. And I think that's okay when we truly understand people trying to put options on the table because we understand when they're coming around to get it to the real vote, the people of the city will make the decision. So don't think that we don't know that. I think the, the problem that I see, and it was quite evident Tuesday, that it seems as though we did not get buy-in in doing this process. And that continuously to happen where we're not getting buy-in through subcommittees and things. Why is it that we just now hearing about that we're thinking about doing something for the roads? I mean, this is a city that should be working together hand in hand with administration and council, but the councils seem like they weren't really in tune to this process. That is the big problem that I see with both of these issues. The marijuana issue, there's been a process that's been turned upside down, and then this bond issue process for us to be able to get information properly to digest it so it's something we can say, yeah, let's put it to the people together. I think it should have went through a subcommittee before, you know, whomever mayor in the administration took the efforts to put somebody engaged in this for a while. And who's ever over that area, it seems like it should have went through one of the council's people's subcommittee. So we had a chance to digest it and know about it. So if some things be handled this way, it's the process that we have a problem with. And I, I, I didn't get a lot of information on it last week when I heard the presentation, and I had a lot of questions. And I'm not saying ultimately it's not a good, it's not an option to propose, but let's do that collectively, that we can propose options, that we all know what we trying to do. And last thing I wanna say is there's infrastructure money coming to do a lot of infrastructure work. Why would we not, not have an opportunity to see what kind of infrastructure work we can have in our city before we take on the debt?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Dr. Waterman.
And as a housekeeping item, please put your phones on vibrate or silent so that way everyone could have full access to everyone's comments.
I don't have to reiterate what others have said and commented on about not having a plan, not having a performer to show how this $114 million is going to be spent. There's a few lines and a couple pages that were given in the agenda, but this is nothing like what people should have. And you should have council to make a decision such as this. I am familiar with the gentleman, Mr. Brian Luffler, who's here today and from Miller Canfield. And I know that they are professionals, and they would have given us all the options and the information that should be had to make an impetus, an important decision like this. But there's a pattern in this administration that seems to be developing, and that's it. The council, you brought things at the last minute, things of such importance, and they bring it to such a timing, and they say the sky's falling, the sky's falling, you have to decide on it right now. And that's an insult to the people who are gonna have to pay that, and it's an insult to you too. So this is something that has a magnificent impact for the city. As the past mayor who came into the city, when we were in debt, you know, we were almost bankrupt. So many people had lost their homes, lost their jobs. We had to struggle back to make good decisions to get back into financial stability so that we could leave a surplus to the incoming administration. So to make a impromptu decision like this on such an important matter that can indent the city and impact the citizens for 30 years without having enough information, without having a plan, is reckless, given what we've been through. As they say, where there is no plan, the people perish.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. Mr. Chuck Johnson, and then Larry Jasper next.
Thank you very much, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm very much appalled at the fact that this would come forward even from Tuesday night's meeting because I don't think it's a fair move on the part of the administration. This could have been knocked down, but I understand what one of the speakers said. Something has to come sooner than later. But even the governor of the state ran on the fact of fix the damn roads, and it never happened. The roads are still bad. We're paying for higher gas prices at the gas pump only because the governor said fix the damn roads, so she taxed us some more. My next statement about this whole issue, mayor, is that when the county comes and takes over the city of Pontiac like they planned to do, how are we gonna be assessed then? How are we gonna be taxed then? These are things that we need to look at. Thanks for keeping my time. These are things that we need to look at and, and consider, not just wait at the 11th hour and then throw something at us that we all don't agree with. Last Tuesday, Councilwoman James, you asked about, asked a question about how much money this would impact the homes. Right away, the mayor went and pulled up on his desk, he pulled up the document that already was prepared for you guys to look at because then it wouldn't be any question about what the tax rates were gonna be. This was just a, just a document that we all should have had visibility of, but we didn't. We didn't have this before the meeting. Well, anyways, I noted a lot of folks wanting to speak on this issue. I've said my piece, and I'm satisfied, but I hope that this council thinks about all of these citizens out here that's gonna be impacted by this. Thank you, including Chuck Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Larry Jasper.
Good evening, everybody. You guys decided you wanted to, or the mayor wanted you guys to approve the council, $114 million in less than 10 days. Tuesday was the first time anybody heard about it, and with the response from the council members, obviously you didn't have any information on it because you asked for things that weren't prepared. That's almost impossible to believe, that you would go ahead and approve today because you wanna get it on the ballot with the marijuana approval. That ballot will probably only bring 10% of the voters to, to the polls. If you're gonna really approve this and have the citizens of Pontiac approve it, you should have it in 2024, in the November election. Give yourself some time. Run through everything. Find out if there's a way that you can take $30 million of that 110 and actually take care of all the roads, a temporary fix, so everybody's enjoying the benefits. But when you take a look at what's gonna cost the citizen, that's huge. You've got Biden bucks coming in, and Biden economics, economics isn't working. You ask anybody that's just barely making it, and they're, they're, they're using the credit cards right now, so now you're gonna go turn around and hit them with another $200, $300, $400, $500. We haven't even know what the price is yet. That's impossible. You know, I brought to this city a partnership where dividends would be paid out to citizens. They may have been able to afford this kind of a tax where they'd be receiving. You know, Farmington, I'm sorry, Southfield just got a new Costco, and they ran a deal through the council where residents had to be 40% of the employment. I hear these things happening all the time. People are always arguing about these kind of things, and nothing's ever happened where the benefit to the citizens, who've been here all their lives, have gone through all the hell. So we should do something for them, and I intend to fight for it. I tell you right now that if you did something like that, where you had some money coming in, these people could actually afford to pay the dues, they would want the roads fixed, and they would pay it. When you do stock ownership with a partnership, they're able to actually turn that into their children. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Jasper. Ms. Darlene Clark and Ms. Gloria Miller on deck.
Good afternoon, audience, TV people. My name is Darlene Clark, and I'm speaking basically to the public for the public's ears. Council, you can take this under consideration, you as well as mayor. Gentrification is a process where the character of poor urban neighborhoods is changed by the wealthier people moving to improving housing, attracting new businesses, and typical displaced incurred inhabitants, which is the poor people. Pontiac consists of 35 to 40% homeowners. The rest is 60 to 65 renters. Pontiac consists of 20.5 miles. Pontiac also have 550 streets. According to past mayor and, and present, past council, it takes $1 million to complete a mile or repair a street. To divide that in half, out of the 550 streets that we have in Pontiac, only 207 will be covered. Now, the governor did say fix those damn roads. She didn't say fix the damn streets. Now, in fixing the streets, the mayor would like you to believe that he's doing all this improvement to help the citizens of Pontiac, but for 40% residents, how are you helping them? Once again, mayor, council, and the people who's listening, do not vote for this millage. Do not pass this. The $114 million to be put on generations of family members to obtain something that they're trying to gentrify the city of Pontiac? It's not feasible. It's nowhere feasible. The lack of respect ensuring the people to show you this is gentrification. Our mayor and council didn't even have the nurse to bring it to, like they say. They didn't even have a meeting to even approach the people with it. Council, you need legal representation. Tim Grimal is a political person, and he's an attorney. I cannot say that, and I have said that many times before. You need to cover your assets, which is your backs, and I understand my time is up. But you need to cover yourself because once Tim Grimal is out of here,
Your time is up.
you have to live with us.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Ms. Gloria Miller.
First of all, Council President McGinnis, I had a senior to stop me coming in City Hall. The trash on Pike, between Pike and Auburn has not been picked up, and it, I'm sure you're handling that, okay? I'm gonna leave it at that. I told him I would mention it. Again, I'm talking to the resident. Tuesday was the first day we ever heard of this. Now, I'm sure even the people that don't, we all don't agree on policies, but this is a pattern. See, I've been coming here from day one, when this, when this council came here, when this administration came here. This is just one project that you guys figured out. They've been doing this for a while. There's a lot of things been going that didn't come to the people. You can't do anything without us. We the one put you there. Not one person that Tuesday said, you know what, mayor, we're gonna take this to our, our districts. We're gonna have town halls. We gotta wait and see what they want. If you had have did that, you would never work for me because I work for the people. That's all. I work for people because being an elected official, you a servant. You serve others. A lot of people can't do that. They serve themselves. You serving others. I'm not even a council person, but I still, I still take care of my people when they come to me if they got an issue. If they hurt, I hurt, and what you're doing is absolutely asinine, crazy. Two days later, having a meeting between 18 hours for the people to digest with no plan, with no direction on what street you're going to do, you don't know anything. And then you put it on there with marijuana because you're hoping that all the young people will come, and they'll vote for the marijuana, and then they'll look at the, the bond issue, and then they'll check that yes. Good strategy. The one thing you guys keep doing, you misinterpreting us. We are smarter than you think. And I'm, I'm, I'm like this. You fooled me one time, shame on me. Shame on, fooled me two, twice, shame on us. The mayor is, I got a pattern, and it's not about the people.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Bass.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Bass, Citizens District Council President, and I'm here to speak on the number one item, which is the bond issue, and it's going to encompass something else as well, because we're a little tired of telling our representative the same thing at every meeting that we come to. We're not council people. We can't be here every day and go through your packets. We don't even get the packet, but we are sick of coming to public hearings and pop-up meetings of somebody getting in a pivoting and then scheduling a meeting in 18 hours, and we have to get phone calls. We don't get the emails. We get phone calls that just know that there's something going down. Perception is a lot when it comes to seniors, especially in our district. I'm going to say our district, because I live in my district. I can tell you that. But bottom line is, that perception is that you're trying to slide something by us when you continuously do the same thing. You bring up things at the last minute that we have no idea as to what's in it or what it's about, and you say, well, will council pass it? Once y'all pass it, we're done. Y'all are our last line of defense when it comes to policies, and y'all are our first defense when it comes to our finances. If y'all do not watch our finances, we're going to be in just as big a trouble with this as we are Village of Bloomfield. And you know what I'm talking about, because we got 35 years before we'll see anything for more.
Thank you, sir. That concludes Agenda Address, President McGinnis.
All right. Next on the agenda, item number one. There is a resolution to approve road and road facilities bond proposal for the February 27, 2024 presidential primary ballot. And just to set the table, we don't normally have two meetings in one week. It's not our intention or desire to be convening multiple times in one week. I want to thank the Charter Revision Commission, who had been scheduled to have a meeting tonight. They had planned to move their meeting into another part of City Hall, and ultimately that meeting is not taking place tonight, but that was very magnanimous of the members of the Charter Revision Commission. This was a resolution first brought at the regular city council meeting on Tuesday evening, so that is when it was considered. City council wanted more time to be able to further research, review, and receive information and feedback from the community. The city charter requires that if items, proposals such as this go on the ballot, the city council has to authorize them proceeding to the ballot. So that's the action, as some of you in Agenda Address already alluded to. You're well aware of that, but just want to reemphasize that this is not deciding the outcome of the bond. It's about saying, will it be permitted to be placed on the next election? And that's true for the next resolution as well, and we'll provide context for that as well. But Clerk Doyle, I first wanted to confirm, do we need a new move in second? There was a motion in a second from this resolution that took place on Tuesday evening's meeting. We postponed it to come up at this meeting, but would it be in order for us to have a new move in support to even debate the motion, considering I think there's been some slight language changes?
Yes, I think so, yeah.
Okay. Concerning the language changes, I will seek a motion from the city council member to even begin debate. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the road and road facilities bond Is there a second? Sir Doyle. It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Parker, so now it can be debated. So we'll give the floor first to Mayor Grimal, since he and his administration have submitted this proposal for consideration, for him to make his case to city council and the community. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to turn it over to Deputy Mayor Stevens, who's been very diligent in compiling information to answer some of the questions the city council asked on Tuesday, and so I want him to present the information that we've compiled and answer to city council's questions. I know we talked quite a bit on Tuesday, but I want Deputy Mayor Stevens to walk council through the answers to the questions.
You have the floor. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council President. So the first thing that I want to do is, I guess, just clarify the meaning of why we brought this resolution on Tuesday and why we are now here today. We are, in fact, asking if a proposal should be put on the ballot. We are not asking today for an increase in taxes. We are asking today for the opportunity for the citizens to hear the entire reason, and then the citizens will make the decision whether or not they want to pay another four mils. So today is, and Tuesday was not about making the argument for, yes, we think that you should increase your taxes. This was to say, we would like you to have the opportunity to hear the full range of information of why we did that. And so with that, I will go forward with starting to answer some of the questions that had been brought up. And the reason why this information had not been originally presented, again, is because it was not our intent to make the argument for the millage increase. It was our intent to make the argument that residents should have the option of deciding if they wanted to have a millage increase or not. So the question was, one of the questions that came up was, how much money does the city currently receive for road maintenance? And the answer to that question is, in this current fiscal year that we are in, we received $6,355,098.48 to go towards major roads. We received $1,928,780.85 to go towards local roads. Now, both of those numbers sound quite large, but I need to put that into perspective. With both of those numbers, we have to hold back a portion of that so that we have money to match state and federal dollars for other projects that we may do. Additionally, out of all of that money, that is how we pay for any road patching, any road repair. That is how we pay for all of the DPW employees. The five-year average on those numbers that I just read you is actually 9% and 7% respectively less. So this year happens to be a high year. We got more money this year than we normally would expect to receive, and those are Act 51 dollars. Additionally, there are approximately 1,028 lane miles under the city's jurisdiction. So when we're talking about roads and how much road needs to be repaired, there's approximately 1,000 miles of roadway that the city is responsible for maintaining. The average cost of rebuilding, so if you have to totally rebuild a lane mile, right? So the road is in such poor condition that you can't just put patch on it, you can't make a minor repair, you need to go all the way down to the base, and many of our roads are in that condition. The average cost to rebuild just one mile of road is $3,216,000. So I bring all of those numbers to say that we understand that it is a lot of money that is being requested, but we also want to be clear and direct with the public that this ultimately is not the decision of myself, the mayor, or the council. It is the decision of the public. Do you want to, do you want to have this done so that we can improve the roads? Without doing some millage, we will not have the money to move the roads from the conditions that they are in to decent conditions. Additionally, every year that we delay doing this, the next year, it is going to become more expensive, because more roads are going to fall from a fair or a good position to a poor position, which means they will slowly move from the place where we can do preventative maintenance or minor repair and move to the place where we need to do major repair. Some of the questions that specifically came up tonight, one of the questions was, at $114 million of bonding, you know, does the city have capacity to do additional bonding? The answer to that question is yes. We estimate, without inflation and, you know, regular increase in property values and new properties being built, that we could levy up to $270 million. So there is excess capacity, and there are things that are on the books that would increase our capacity, and there are things that will be falling off that will also increase our capacity to borrow. The question came up about what segments of the city will be done, and now I have to say, this plan is based over a 30-year period. I originally, when I was dealing with the engineers, asked to do it in a 10-year period, and they were very clear that even if we had the capacity to borrow enough money to redo all of the streets in 10 years, we don't have the capacity physically to do that, because Pontiac is not large enough to have enough alternative routes that we could do all of the streets of Pontiac in 10 years and actually have traffic flow throughout the city. So we intentionally said, all right, if it would cost us approximately all of our borrowing capacity, because it would cost approximately $280 to $300 million to bring all of the roads up to a good and fair condition. The proposal that is in front of us today would bring approximately, so currently, only 23% of the roads that are under the city's jurisdiction are at good or fair condition. Only 23% of the roads under the city's jurisdiction are at a good or fair rating. All the rest of them are poor and deteriorating. The proposal that is being presented to go on the ballot for the residents to get more information on and decide in February, we estimate would bring that number up to 60%. And again, that is four mils. We estimate that it would have been eight or nine mils to be able to bring all of the roads up to good or fair condition. It is very true that as of today, as we sit here right now and speak, I cannot tell you exactly which roads are going to be done, and there is a very simple reason for that. One is, we are currently working on a complete roads master plan, and that complete roads master plan will be turned into a governmental agency that oversees all of the cities next year. The second reason is, without knowing or having an idea of whether or not the citizens want us to bond for additional money, to know how much money we have to put together this plan, it made more sense to wait and see, are we going to have bonded money, and that way we can say, we know how much money we have, and we can prioritize which roads to fix. If we find out that the citizens do not want to do this millage, then we will have a very, very different plan that we will put together. So we will put, if this millage goes on the ballot, we will put together a plan that will say, here, generally speaking, is what we are planning to do. Here are the list of roads that are under consideration. Once we know for an absolute fact that we have the money, we will go even deeper into that plan and prioritize which streets get done in what order. Without knowing that we have the money, we will be putting together a completely different plan that we will be presenting to our oversight agency. And Mayor, I believe that that is all of the information that I have compiled.
Thank you, Deputy. Further before we deliberate.
Yeah, I want to emphasize a couple of key points here, and some of these I mentioned on Tuesday as well. The most important number here is that 77% of the city's lane miles are in poor condition. We have 1,028 lane miles in the city, and that means that 791 lane miles are in poor condition. Roads that are in poor condition are generally recommended for complete reconstruction. And as the deputy mayor said, complete reconstruction costs a little over $3 million per lane mile. So you can do the math. $3 million per lane mile, 791 lane miles in poor condition. And the roads didn't get in this bad a shape by accident. They got in this bad a shape because past mayors, past city councils, were afraid to have this conversation. And every year that goes by that we don't invest in our roads, they get worse and worse and worse. They don't stay the same when we don't invest in them. They get worse and worse and worse. And that's why we believe not only that we need a large investment, but also that we shouldn't be putting this off, because putting it off just makes the problem get worse, just makes the problem get more expensive to fix. And so if we're not passing four mils, or at least offering that option to the voters, it's only going to get more expensive and require more mils down the road. No pun intended. And so this is really an urgent problem, and I think residents know that our roads are an urgent problem. Everywhere I go, people talk about the terrible shape that the roads are in, and they're right. They are in terrible shape. But the amount of money we receive from the state through the road funding distribution simply is not enough to come anywhere close to making...
Mayor, I've got to stop you. If all side conversations could cease, you certainly can have extended personal conversations in the hallway or outside of this meeting. Mayor Grimal has the floor. We want to keep the meeting flowing.
We simply do not get enough money from the state through the Act 51 funding distribution formula to move the needle in a positive correction. And you heard some of those road funding distribution numbers, but the large majority of the money we get from the state are for roads that are designated as major roads, and that's a designation with the state. That money, which is, you know, roughly, you know, $6 million, give or take, can only be used on major roads. A very small number in proportional terms of our roads are major roads. The vast majority of our roads are called city local roads, and the annual amount of dollars we get from the state through their funding distribution for that is about $2 million, a little under $2 million, actually. And one lane mile costs over $3 million to reconstruct, and the vast, vast majority of our neighborhood streets, the streets that have been most neglected in the past, are those local roads that we only receive less than $2 million from the state every year for, which doesn't even pay for reconstructing one lane mile, when we have many hundreds of lane miles in our neighborhoods that are in terrible, terrible shape. And so we've put together a list of the Pacer ratings. We've distributed that to city council, and Pacer ratings of 1, 2, 3, and 4 are deemed to be in poor condition. That's a rating out of 10. As you can imagine, with 77% of the city's roads in that poor condition, the vast majority of neighborhoods, the vast majority of the city is in tough shape, and that's why we are coming with a request of council to put this option before voters. We would like, by the way, too, as part of this, to try to find a resolution finally for some of those neighborhoods, Galloway Lake Estates, Fieldstone, Stonegate, so that they can actually have a path forward so that the city can do what's right by them after their developers left them high and dry a number of years ago. And we all know some of the big-ticket roads that have been in tough shape and have been neglected for far too long. I'm happy to say that next year, we're going to be doing Bagley and Gulf Drive no matter what. Next year, we're going to be doing Martin Luther King... Next year, we're going to be doing Martin Luther King between M-59 and Perry no matter what. But there are a slew of other roads that are household names in Pontiac because they're in bad condition. paddock, Earlmore, Kennet, Walton, east of Baldwin is in tough shape, Voorhees. These are roads that aren't even currently planned to be done because we don't have the money to do them. If we get this additional revenue, we can take care of those roads as our residents deserve.
All right. So the matter is now before us. First on the speaker's list, Pro Tim Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. First, I'd like to thank the administration for emailing me the pass report, but I definitely find it, it was sort of incomplete from what I've seen from previous cities. I understand the ratings, but it was no recommended treatment per street in what you sent to council. So it's really hard for me to determine whether something needs little or no maintenance, cracked ceiling, minor patching, structural improvement or overlays, or total reconstruction. One of my problems that I have with this particular, I know that we're just trying to put it on the ballot, but for me to go back to my district and say, you guys should support this in my meeting, which I have Friday, and I really didn't have a conversation with them at all, I was hoping to have one with them. 30 years for $114,000. No, no, 14 million. It's just, for me, it's just not good policy to put it on the citizens for 30 years. I've seen a school district do it historically, and they was able to get bailed out by the state of Michigan. But the state is not going to bail the city of Pontiac out. We understand that we need to do something about roads. I would rather see it piecemealed. I'd rather see it piecemealed until we can get the trust of this community. And that's one thing the school district had to learn, until you can get the trust of the community, then you can go out and ask for $100 million. Our first sinking fund was $35 million, so we can get the trust of the seven cities that support that district. Four mills is a lot. And I have received texts all day concerning this particular matter from my seniors. And you stated that if we don't go four mills, then we can't really have no impact. But I also think that any impact is an impact moving forward. If we say 60% is bad or poor, why not shoot a reasonable number that we can get done in three to four years, and then work on the rest at that later date? And I look, also, I've seen streets, I've missed some streets in the sixth district with a lot worse roads that wasn't on your list that I received in the mail, too. So I'm kind of not understanding why those streets are not on that particular, those lists. But I could email you that as well. I don't know where my district stands, honestly. And for me, to go to the people and get it voted down is actually worse than not putting it on the ballot, is how I feel. Thank you.
Councilman Goodman?
So I do want to ask a question, because I think there was some information that was in the email that would probably be important to this. So, from the list that I saw, from the Transportation Asset Management Council, based on the Pacer rating, there is a prescribed course of action based on the number assigned by Pacer. Is that correct? So, for example, going through almost every road that's in this spreadsheet and on this list, District 3, almost every road that is in my district would be at a 3 or a 2. And in that case, based on the Transportation Asset Management Council, most of the roads that are in District 3, if I were to do rough math based on what I have been able to go through and mark up, would be almost about 80% of my district, if not more, would need, based on the prescription, reconstruction. There are some roads, like, for example, Jocelyn, that is at a 7 or 8, that would likely be prescribed to preventative maintenance, because it's in decent condition still after having, when I've been done, not that long ago. So, I mean, at least for the perspective of District 3, I have talked about specifically the Pacer scores and the road quality with the residents of my district relentlessly for two years. I have knocked doors about this, both when I ran for office and since then. I have talked to residents repeatedly, and most of my residents, in their fact about complaining about roads, support us doing something about the roads. But, and I've had this conversation with the mayor privately and in these meetings, that a thing that is being brought up by the public is, this is a large project. We have yet to complete one of those. It is very difficult for them to have faith and trust in us to do these larger projects because we've yet to complete one. And again, that is compounding into another meeting where it is on full display that while this may be a good thing, it is difficult for us to get them, get the people on our side, because they don't have faith in us to be able to do it. So I would stress heavily to the administration to spend the time that we are in this meeting, because again, we're not making a decision today on behalf of the people. This will go to the ballot. But please do know that the ability to over-explain and give every bit of detail that you are legally allowed to do would probably be massively important in this meeting, because the people need to understand just as well as, at least I do, based on the information a lot of my residents do as having heard me talk about this. But my, but every district is not the same. So please take the time in this meeting to make sure that some questions that were asked during agenda address truly get responded to, because I think they are massively important for the understanding of this.
Anyone else wish to speak? Councilman James?
Yeah, I appreciate the administration working to get some of the information that we did request. And I do have-- What, first I want to clarify-- The council did approve a road study. How many months ago was that, that the road study was approved? This is not the first time that we've heard this. We have discussed this as a council with the mayor. We approved a road, this road study, you know, in anticipation of making this request of voters to see if they wanted to, you know, to pay for road repair. This study was requested months ago, and so it's not, I just want to clarify, it's not like we, this is a total surprise to us, because road repair was one of the top issues that residents are concerned about, and you can only patch so much. Every winter, we have people who are replacing tires in our city because of really, really bad roads. So I just want to clarify that this is not the first conversation that we have had about this. The concern, though, was that, and it did not go to subcommittee, which I believe it should have, and it, we should have had more time to go through the details of what the study proposed. And I would have liked to have seen, really, an executive summary of the Excel spreadsheet. Generally, when you are paying for a study of that magnitude, it would include an executive summary, where you're summarizing your data for people to really understand what you are looking at. But, you know, we realize, I realize, as Mayor has said, that we are attempting to bring this before the residents. I do feel, though, I share others' concern, that this, 30 years is a long time to obligate our residents. Four mills is, I believe, really high. And I think we just have to balance the need with the obligation. And I think as a council, that's where we would play in of giving our assessment of, does this need match what we are asking our residents to pay? I would like to see us really revise this proposal. I would like to see us make it more, in fact, we didn't talk about the recommendation that Bayers gave in terms of the three series, that you're staggering these allocations over three series, and each series, you know, being a certain amount of money, and going out for a period of 30 years. So I would recommend that we start with Series 1, and that we implement a ballot proposal on the basis of Series 1 only. That would be my recommendation.
The question that you asked, Councilwoman James, I believe it was about two and a half months ago, that city council would have authorized the DLZ firm, but it could have been about two months--
Yeah.
--or so, to authorize the DLZ firm to undertake a Roads Master Plan and assessment.
Yes.
But it sounds like we may want to have Mr. Lipscomb and/or Mr. Baird, or Mr. Lefler on behalf of Baird, share the, what's the thought process behind Three Series? What's the pros and cons of that? So that way, we can, because she raises an excellent point, we didn't go in depth on that on Tuesday. So if you could share that.
Certainly. Good evening. Thank you, council president, members of council, and members of the administration. My name is Ron Lipscomb. I'm an attorney with Miller Canfield. We serve as bond counsel for the city. I want to, I think there's been a lot of very good comments and questions tonight, and I do think that it would help if I, you know, am able to indulge you and share a little bit of my personal experience with doing this in other communities. The unlimited tax general obligation bond process is one that is undertaken quite frequently, particularly for road projects, because of the unique nature of the infrastructure that is being built. Oftentimes, and, you know, I've presented this, you know, I can't say hundreds of times, but certainly dozens of times, to different city councils and township boards, et cetera. And I've actually had township boards or city councils, you know, make a comment that this is kind of the easiest vote that they can ever take, because it really is putting a question directly to the voice of the voters. It is a, you know, really direct democracy. And someone even made a comment one time that by not voting to put a question on the ballot, they're taking away the voice of many of their voters who won't have a chance to say anything. But one point on costs, the one thing I think is important to understand, and I'll let, you know, Brian take over if he wants to jump in on this, but the inflation costs on road projects in particular has gone up exponentially higher than CPI over the past several years. And that's for a number of reasons. Obviously, CPI is a function. But in addition to that, there is a shortage of labor, and there is a lot of money being dumped into infrastructure right now. I would venture to make an educated guess that if you were to propose these same projects 10 years ago, you would have been spending half as much as it will cost now. And one thing is for certain is that those costs are never going to go down, and the roads are never going to get better. Okay? So, status quo is deterioration. But the way that these UT bond processes work is, there's a vote, like what's being asked of you tonight, and then there is an education process, okay? The city cannot use public funds for advocacy. They can use city funds to just simply present what is being asked and what is being planned, okay? Certainly, there will be town halls, there will be people for and against it, and that process, 99% of the time, happens right before the election occurs, okay? The one thing about the way we frame these questions is, we do it broadly. We do it with enough, you know, sufficient detail to allow people to know what they're voting on. But we do it broadly because you never know what's going to happen. You know, there may be a water main burst or anything like that that changes the dynamics of the plan. Procedurally, what happens, this is the first of many votes that the public will take and you will take. We talked about doing maybe two or three different resolutions or series of bonds. What that equates to is that you will have at least two or three more times to vote on this. And the way this process works is, once the authorization is granted, that's just the beginning. This is the very beginning of the process. It is not late at all. Because what happens is, once the authorization is granted, then everyone takes out their pencils and say, this is what we're going to do year one, this is what we're going to do year two, this is what we're going to do year three. And the way, because these bonds are issued on a tax-exempt basis, the IRS has a number of rules in terms of how much you can issue and how fast you have to spend it, okay? So you can only spend, you can only issue bonds in an amount for which that you will spend at least 85% of the proceeds within three years. They don't want you to issue bonds and hold on to it, okay? So that will be Series 1, that will be, you know, however it happens. But there will be a very specific plan at that time when that bond resolution, the authority to actually issue bonds, this is not the authority to do anything. You just want to know what the voters have to say about it, okay? And once that first series is being planned, at that point, there will be definitive plans, this street will be done between this road and that road, that will all be laid out, and everyone will be able to understand what the projects are. So, the other thing I would just say, I know if I, if I, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. You said the, each series. Did I understand you correctly that each series will be voted on?
This initial authorization is for everything, okay?
Is for all three series?
It would be for all three series, correct.
Okay. So what else would be voted on?
You would then, for each series, you have to vote a specific resolution authorizing that series of bonds. So the first project, series of projects, if it's 5 million, if it's 10 million, if you want the bonds to be paid over 15 years, you can issue a smaller amount and not to exceed whatever it is. All that, all that, those parameters are set in each bond resolution. So I just, I don't want the missing, you know, impression that this is the only bud at the apple for the public and for you. This is just the beginning.
Mayor Grimal, to further answer the question?
Yeah, just to clarify and answer to Councilwoman James's question, I want to make sure, because I think it's confusing, given that there are a number of votes occurring. So I want to make sure, though, that I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
You're saying that tonight is simply to put on the ballot a question for voters to decide as to whether or not to authorize mills for bonds. If voters approve that, then it would come back to council--
Correct.
--to approve each individual bond issuance--
That's correct.
--that city council could choose to do or not to do.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Lefler, anything further you'd like to share about the merits of doing series?
Sure. Thank you very much. My name is Brian Lefler. I'm sorry. Do I have the floor? I just want to make sure.
I've got you. Keep going.
In terms of the issuance of the series, is the information that we had received from the engineers in terms of the projects, the first series that you saw was 30 years. One of the things that we were asking, and that we did receive feedback from the administration, was for a 30-year bond issue, the useful life of the improvement has to be at least 30 years. So think about this, like on a school district, when they did the $145 million worth of bonding for the schools, they issued 30-year bonds because the school buildings are going to be lasting for the next 30 years. So one of the things that we turn to bond counsel, and bond counsel turns to the engineers, there's going to be a certificate, is that when they spend the proceeds of any of the series for a project, the first thing they ask, how long is this improvement going to last? If it's essentially the total road reconstruction, that's a 30-year improvement. If you're just putting a little blacktop or, you know, on top-- If you're just putting a little blacktop or, you know, on top, that may be, say, a 15-year improvement. So the series that we had put together was working with your engineers to say, "Okay, what are the projects are going to be, have a useful life?" And that's what we had developed in this three series in coming up with the $114.5 million amount. Does that answer your question, council member?
Uh, final follow-up, uh, Councilwoman James, anything further?
Well, could he give the, the numbers for the three series for the sake of the audience?
Oh, sure, sure. The, the first series, uh, was 55 million. The second series of issuance was 45 million and the third series was 14.5 million totaling the 114.5. Keep in mind, this, as you're working through other projects that are in the city, other dollars that may be available, these series amounts will, probably will change. As Mr. Lipscomb had mentioned, uh, and actually the mayor has said, if the $114 million is approved, each bond issuance is going to have to come back to city council to authorize that series of bonds. And then you'll have those projects clearly identified, given the fact that you may have other projects or things are going on in the city so that there's an efficient mobility with inside the city.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Parker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Brother President. Ladies and gentlemen, this day, this evening is about choice and we all have one. I have sit here for the better part of a year, almost two years now and listened to everything from the previous mayor to the previous council come and tell us. We, most of the time, don't listen to the public and take away your choice. The administration has submitted a proposal for a bond to go on the ballot so that you will have a choice. That's all. You get to go to the poll, you get to vote it up or down, whichever way you choose. There's a couple items on our agenda today that gets discussed. One is the bond, the other is marijuana. Most of you, when we as a council thought we was doing what the public wanted and did in ordinance, we got, you took away our choice every time. You took away our choice, put it on the ballot. We could have did that in November. We thought we had it worked out. We did not. And so now we're going to look at putting it on the ballot and give you your choice. But make no mistake, this is your choice. That's all the administration is saying. We want to do this. You can tell us whether we actually get to do it or not by your choice. Go to the polls and vote. And I know everybody's sitting there, "But we don't go to the poll." That's still your choice. No, that's not what we're hoping.
Order in the chambers.
Everybody in here has a choice to go to the polls or not. Everybody. If you are eligible to vote, you can go to the polls and vote. Now whether it's an all-seed or an in-seed, whatever. If it's an issue that concerns you, go to the polls and let your voice be heard. That's all, that's all this administration is asking. Now will there be some additional meetings? Because I believe we have over 60, oh, well over 60-plus people in this city. We know this room is not even close to that amount. Choice. Between now and depending, if we put it on the ballot between today and the 27th of February, you have pretty close to 80 days to discuss it, talk about it, meet about it, plan on it, share your opinion about it, have town halls meetings concerning it, but you still get a choice. We could, and there are some people even in the community right now that as you sit there and say, "We don't want it," they're saying, "We okay with it." Choice. Your choice is your vote at the polls. Make it speak to what you want and not what three or four people in this room say you won't. It's a choice. And as I keep saying, and I will certainly speak at the polls on my choice, but my choice here today is to give you your choice. That's all. He's asking, can we put this to the ballot, to the people to say?
Order in the chambers.
Now, having heard what you have said for the last almost two years, you can't have it both ways. You can't say, speak for us when it's convenient, but don't speak for us when we get upset. He's saying, and I will say with him, you have a choice. Go to the polls and vote. That's your choice. You can say.
Order in the chambers.
You can say whatever you want at the polls on the 27th. If you don't like it, don't like it. If you like it, vote for it. Again, it's your choice. Thank you.
Councilman Rutherford, then Councilman Nicholson.
Um, I hear a lot of back and forth about choices and all that, but when we don't have the information and have enough time to review it, it makes me uncomfortable. When you have a large amount of my district calling saying, "This is not right," it makes me uncomfortable. So I hear choices, I hear going to the ballot box, but if a majority rule says that they don't feel comfortable with the amount of millage, how much it's going to cost, the timeline, I can't feel comfortable and confident in voting for this. I, I can't. Because at the end of the day, it will affect so many other people and it's, my hesitation is, was not enough information given out. My hesitation is it wasn't rolled out correctly. My hesitation is that in Royal Oak, you had the Pacer scoring where they showed each line what was the actual damage to the streets. And I have it, I just couldn't go get it in the back room, whereas the one that you guys were using, presented to us just has the numbers. So I don't feel comfortable with this. I, I, I can't vote for something I don't feel comfortable in, especially because in my district, this is going to affect them more than any other district. Because if you look at the streets that are in repairs, it, it's, it's, it's three, one and seven. And my district is hesitant about this because we haven't given out enough information. We haven't explained to them what's the purpose of it. And most importantly, people, and I for one who's, in another week will be a homeowner, I can't afford $200 a year. I simply can't do this. And it's not because I don't want the roads fixed, it's not because I don't want to help anybody, it's because it is not rolled out correctly. So I for one, as much as I support fixed and roads, this ain't it. So I'll be voting no. So that's it.
Councilman Nicholson. Order in the chambers.
So, yeah, I, I, I shared some of that sentiment as well. Uh, you know, it's about choice, but we have to tell people what they're choosing. Um, and for me, the $114 million from the memo I, we got from engineering, um, that gives us some information about where some streets, you know, were, were within each one of those categories. I, I can tell you, I don't know, I, I, I'm not an engineer, um, but I'm on these streets and some of these have already been repaired. So I don't know, you know, if we're waiting for the information from the new engineering study, I don't know that I can say, if this information, what was used to come up with $114 million, I, I, I don't think that number just, if, we're the education piece. If I'm going to sit in my, in my, in my district meeting and they're going to say, "Brett, should I vote for this and where's that money? What am I paying for?" I think that I should be able to be equipped with that information. I heard what, what, um, what the gentleman from Miller Canfield said. I, I, and, you know, a lot of times I think a lot of things that we end up doing and many governments end up doing are backward. But, uh, I don't believe that education comes after, um, opportunity. I think we, we educate and then people decide what their opportunity is and whether or not they decide they want to vote for it. I get, I, I totally understand the time constraint. I understand that there's a lot, um, that has to go into this. I just also think that we're missing discussing the, the, the fact that in this actual, in the language for the ballot proposal, the, the bond proposal, it does talk about the, uh, the DPW facility. So of that $114 million, how much do we intend that that will carve out? If that's my, that's my one question I'd like an answer to.
Would a member of the administration like to answer that DPW facility cost component? Mayor Grinbold?
Yeah, $10 million, roughly, is the answer. And, uh, as we talked about at Tuesday's meeting, uh, that's a function of the fact that Pontiac unfortunately is in a position unlike any other city in Oakland County I know of, which is we don't own our own DPW facility. Uh, and that's because emergency managers sold the DPW facility for a song and the city's been put in a position to have to rent a facility. And so we need, uh, to own a DPW facility that's suitable for our road repairs. Uh, and, uh, that's not cheap. We believe that, uh, there is a, uh, opportunity to purchase an existing facility that would meet the needs, uh, for $10 million. Uh, if we were to actually build a new facility on vacant land, it would cost, uh, it's estimated much more than $10 million. $10 million is less than 10% of the total bond proceeds we're suggesting. Uh, we know that, uh, asking voters to vote for a bond that in part, uh, is to facilitate a facility, uh, isn't always easy, but it is essential if we're going to have our own DPW facility. And having our own DPW facility is essential, both to save money in the long run that we're currently flushing down the toilet in the form of rent payments, but also to have a more efficient facility so that we can properly and more promptly assault the roads and maintain the roads.
Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I also just want to address, um, the concern about looking at the list. Um, one of the things that I had put in my email to council earlier today is that, and we do have our engineer here and she can speak to it, um, more succinctly. We shorthand Pacer ratings and say XYZ street has a Pacer rating of five or four or three. But that is not how the engineers do the Pacer ratings. The engineers do the Pacer ratings by segments. So the street between, the east-west street between these two north-south streets has a Pacer rating of something. And then between these other two north-south streets, it has another Pacer rating. That Pacer rating may be the same, that Pacer rating may be different. I actually pointed that out to you in the memo that I gave you just before council started. If, uh, Fittis Avenue, and there is a map, a color-coded map on the back. If you look at Fittis, Fittis actually has segments that are in all three categories. Part of Fittis is rated between one and four and is poor. Part of Fittis is rated between five and seven and is fair, and another part of Fittis is rated between eight and 10 and is therefore good. So the shorthand in this was just to say there is some segment of that street that is either rated one or two. The, the full email that you got earlier today has all of the segments on it and you can see the, you can see the rating of each segment of the street.
Mayor Grinbold, you want to answer that first?
Yeah, I, I also want to note that, um, the Pacer ratings don't, uh, aren't officially sort of updated until after roads are improved, but more importantly than that, the proposal that we've presented, uh, would bring 60% of the roads in the city to good and fair. So the limiting factor in the proposal we put forward was not the number of roads in poor condition, it was what we thought would be reasonable, what we thought could actually be done in construction without tying up all the roads in the community. So we understand that there are a couple of roads that were just finished this year that have not yet had their Pacer ratings updated, but the point is that if we're going to get to a majority of our roads in our city in good or fair condition, uh, the four mills is needed in order to do that.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford.
Okay, so, uh, I thank you, uh, President Fosse, for giving the paper I was referring to. So in Royal Oak, they have the Pacer system just like we did from one to 10, and what they did is they did descriptions, as you stated, excellent, very good, good, fair and poor. But the difference is with their rating versus what you guys gave us is that they have the tarmac description, which means good, fair and poor, the asphalt pavement and the concrete pavement. So they did a full spectrum of them, which gave the voters the off, information that they needed as to why it needed to pass. The problem is the list that we have here, like we have Telegraph on here, that's not a city street, correct?
No.
No, it's on here.
May, may I answer the question?
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so Councilman Rutherford, you have the floor.
I'm sorry. To, to President McGinnis, to the administration, Telegraph is not a city street, correct?
Telegraph is not a city street, but every street in the city will receive a Pacer rating regardless if it's county or.
Well, actually Telegraph south of Cesar Chavez is not a city road. North of Cesar Chavez, it is a city road. That's why it's on this list, is that Telegraph between Cesar Chavez and Walton was updated this year and, and repaired. But north of Cesar Chavez, Telegraph is a city road. That's why it's on this list.
Okay. And so my follow-up through the, through the president is we don't have a street name unknown, but this is on here and it says unknown. So again, it's not that I'm picking, I'm just showing you the how, you have to have all the information. You have to explain it step by step so that everybody sees it, why it needs to be done. It's the rollout for me. We're not giving enough information. And I get that we could do it, but we do through the president. Can't we put this on another ballot at another time in another place?
So Councilman Rutherford asks, uh, in terms of other elections, the state of Michigan spells out how many times a year an election can happen in any community in, in the state of Michigan, and unless something has changed, traditionally it's four times a year. It could be February, May, August or November. If you do it and there's nothing else on the ballot, the city picks up the whole price, you know, the whole tab. And so that's why it would not be ideal to hold an election in May because that means the taxpayers are paying for it solo to ask this or other questions. There are, there's an existing election around the Pike in February. That's the presidential primary, where the two major parties are going to decide who's their nominees for president. So the, that, there's costs already being, uh, shared, if you will, by, um, entities higher than the city. Same with August and November. There's already a primary and a general election in this calendar year. So there are, as of this current sitting, other, other entities like the county could, you know, make another election for something else, but right now, the scheduled elections for this year are November, August and February. Those are what's currently on the books right now. Uh, what the mayor shared at Tuesday's meeting is that, uh, if not decided at the February election, that, that it would be another year that would have to go around based on when the, the money can be issued. And I'll let you or the professionals explain that. So there must be some timeline in which each year it can be sort of assessed, so to speak, or, or authorized. So break that down for the.
Well, I'll allow Ron to speak in greater detail to it, but the bottom line is we can't issue a bond unless and until the voters approve it. Um, and so obviously, uh, that delays everything, uh, quite substantially and we would lose at least one construction season. The longer this is postponed, the worse and worse and worse the roads get and the more expensive it becomes. But Ron, why don't you speak in greater detail?
Certainly, yeah. I, I do think that the point about losing a construction season just from a programmatic, uh, you know, perspective is very important to keep in mind. The way this works is that, um, you do a July levy, so you cannot levy anything if the bonds have not been issued. So I think the concept would be that the, if, if the voters approve in February, then we would move to do the first issuance, um, at least by the time that the July 1 tax bills go out. So I think that explains the rationale. Obviously, if we do it in August, you know, that delays, uh, collection of the tax levy, um, at least, but, um, you know, we would have to just delay that for a later issuance.
All right. The speaker's list is exhausted at this point, so what I want to do is gauge where the council would like to, uh, take the matter further. What we have before us right now is a resolution that would have the four mills, um, be what's authorized to go, that proposal go on the February 27th ballot. It was moved and seconded, so that's what's before us, um, but based on the deliberations, um, is there, is there council members who, what I'll do is I'll go through person by person, do you wish to see any road proposal be put to the people in February? And that's, that'll be the first round because if, first, if there's not even an interest on putting any road proposal, then that's that. But if it's, you want to see a road proposal, but you want it to be a smaller amount, which I've heard at least one council person say, um, then that'll be the next round, that if there wants to be a February roads question, what would be the amount or the mills that you want to see put to the people? So Councilman Rutherford, do you wish to see a, a February ballot proposal?
No.
Councilman Nicholson.
Yes, but I don't, I, I, I want, I want, uh, some greater detail and more options.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Goodman, do you, for February?
Can I say pass for the time being while I think?
Sure. Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman James, microphone.
I, I do not support the current proposal.
But you are open to...
I'm okay with them with attempting to pull this together for February, but I don't support the current proposal, no.
Okay. Pro Tem Carrington?
No.
No to February straight up?
No.
Okay. Councilman Goodman?
I'm open to February, would prefer a later date, and also would prefer that there might be some change, things that get changed inside of the millage.
Okay. I think that no one can deny that the roads are a priority. The deteriorating streets in our neighborhoods, it's something that we've heard loud and clear from our neighbors and we experience firsthand. So I acknowledge and appreciate the initiative of trying to give options, trying to come with a solution. Right now, the status quo won't work. If we do nothing different, year after year, it's just going to get worse and worse, and all we'll be doing is spreading pennies over, over hundreds and hundreds of miles. It ain't going to work. So I recognize that the, the current status quo is not a solution. I do not think that the $114 million is the right price tag. I am open to a February question, but I am not supportive of that high of a price tag. So if I'm doing a quick back-of-the-napkin math, that's one council member that wishes to proceed with February and is comfortable with the current rate. There are two, two council members that are okay with February but want a lower rate, two council members that have said no to February, period. Councilman Nicholson, should I categorize you as open to February but wanting more specificity? And you are open to February but would prefer a later date, but you want more specificity and potential changes?
Correct.
Okay. So with that, on Tuesday's meeting, I had asked the administration, it was indicated that it wouldn't be ready to be done that evening, if there was a resolution, an alternative resolution for a smaller amount. So let's say something in the neighborhood of two mills. Is that a resolution that is now available? Deputy Mayor?
So, Council President, the attorney does have a resolution for two mills and a resolution for three mills.
Okay. So for two mills, if that could be distributed to council members right now, but it was moved and seconded by which council members? Clerk Doyle?
It was moved by Goodman and seconded by Parker.
Okay. So moved by Goodman, seconded by Parker. We could either vote this down, or we could amend to substitute it so that what we're debating is the two mills resolution, and then say if there's even any interest in that. So since, since we have this before us, is the two mills resolution been shared?
No.
I can share the numbers with you?
Okay.
Point of order, President.
Yes, point of order has been called. Councilman Parker?
We were called here today to vote on a road proposal as it existed to the packet that we got Tuesday. That was what we was called here to do. Are we now changing it?
Only if councilmembers wish to amend the, the meat of it, the content of it. But if there's no appetite, then...
And so, again, I speak to the fact that although he may have the information, whatever is going to be passed out, I haven't seen. And so I have, I would like to review that before I make a decision on whether I'm going to vote on it or not.
So you have, point received.
So if I, excuse me, I think I still have the mic, right?
Sure.
When we left Tuesday, it was to come and vote on the proposal that was submitted at the Tuesday council meeting. That was it. That was all. Now we're selecting changes which the council has not seen or reviewed, which was the reason why we was here, we're here today anyway, because the council said Tuesday they hadn't seen it or reviewed it properly. When are we going to stop doing that?
Yes, yes.
Order in the chambers.
Either vote on what we came to do, give it to the people, or don't give it to the people. Either way, we will have done what we came to do this evening. Thank you very much.
Councilman Rutherford?
I'm calling for the vote for the original thing that we were here to do, and so I call for the vote.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford to call the question. And what that means is that it stops debate, and then you go to vote on the matter before you. So that is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second vote from Councilman Nicholson. Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Nicholson, that we end debate and vote on the motion before us. Hearing no clarification needed, the motion before us is are we going to end debate and then vote on the proposal? Everyone clear on that? This is essentially, are we going to end debate? Roll call, Clerk Doyle on the motion to call the question. No.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington? Yes. Goodman?
No.
James?
No.
Four yays, three nays.
Is that enough?
Yeah.
Okay. A majority vote, having been registered, the motion to call the question passes, meaning debate has ended, and now we, as the city council, are going to be voting. This is a resolution to approve Road and Road Facilities Bond Proposal for the February 27, 2024 Presidential Primary Ballot. No need to pass it out at this point. So the, this is what the proposal would be. Shall the City of Pontiac, County of Oakland, State of Michigan borrow the principal sum of not to exceed $114,500,000 and issue its unlimited tax general obligation bonds in one or more series to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping street, transportation, and related facility capital improvement projects within the city, consisting generally of, A, the acquisition, construction, and improvement of a public works facility, including all mechanical, electrical, technology, and security systems, site, utility, fixtures, furniture, and parking improvements, and all related appurtenances and attachments thereto; and B, the acquisition, construction, and improvement of local and major streets, including paving, repaving, reconstructing, and improving streets, the necessary rights of way, sidewalks, proper drainage facilities, and all necessary appurtenances and attachments thereto. The bonds will be payable from the taxes the city is allowed to levy in addition to state statutory and city charter limits. The box to the voters would be yes or no. If approved, the estimated millage to be levied in 2024 is 4.000 mills, which is $4 per $1,000 of taxable value. And the estimated simple average annual millage rate required to retire the bonds is 4.000 mills, $4,000, $4 per $1,000 of taxable value. Each series of the bonds shall be payable in not more than 30 years from its date of issuance. So what the resolution would date, if it is passed by the city council, that will go to the voters on February 27. If that, if this resolution fails, then it dies here and it will not be on the ballot in February. So is everyone clear on the resolution before us? Hearing no further requests for clarification, on the resolution to approve Road and Road Facilities Bond Proposal for the February 27, 2024 Presidential Primary Ballot, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
James?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Nicholson?
No.
Parker? Yes. Let the people decide. Rutherford?
No.
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 All right, all right. Good times. Order in the chambers. Thank you for everyone for being here this evening. But that was six to one, correct?
Yeah, one yay, one yes, and six nays.
Okay, so that motion fails, the resolution did not pass. We are on item number two. Resolution to approve Proposal 1, Ordinance Number 2424, and ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 2406, City of Pontiac Adult Use Business Ordinance for the February 27, 2024 Presidential Primary Ballot. So this was an item that had been tabled from the Tuesday evening meeting. Clerk Doyle, it does not need a new second, motion or second.
Actually, you only postponed it for, to this meeting, so you didn't really do a motion in support to approve it.
Okay. So just to make it neat and tidy, is there a motion to approve the resolution? It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Goodman, so the debate is before us. This is a provision in our city charter stating that if the city council adopts something, the people can collect signatures and say, as a referendum, hold it, and we want to vote on it. So that's what's happened before. We adopted and updated ordinance when it comes to adult use marijuana businesses this fall. And when we did that, an individual began collecting signatures. It stopped the implementation of that amended, updated ordinance, and it, now enough signatures were gathered, so the question will be put to the voters of Pontiac. So mainly, this is a formality. We're just saying, yes, it complies with what's required, and this is the election it's going to. The next regularly scheduled election, which, thank goodness, we, the taxpayers, don't have to pick up the bulk of the tab for, is February 27. So just want to give that context. This is not something that originated with the city council. We are, we did not say, hey, stop, and let's have a referendum. That was done by a section of the people of Pontiac, by petitions that were circulated. Mayor and Deputy Mayor, any further context, or did that sort of set the scene adequately?
I think that summarizes it perfectly.
Okay. The ordinance that was adopted in the spring, where there was this similar attempt, then they ultimately pulled off the ballot, that still stands. That ordinance is in effect. So adult use recreational marijuana businesses, that is, is already on the books, so to speak, with the city of Pontiac. This is a referendum on the updates that we adopted in the fall. Mayor and Deputy Mayor, is that an adequate, you know, summary?
That's right. It's just a referendum on the amendments that were made this fall, not on the original ordinance that was approved by council in the spring.
So no matter the outcome in, in February on this particular proposal, that, that April ordinances that we adopted are still in place. But those, those updates and changes that we made in the fall, that's what's being held and being contested, the amended ordinance. All right, Councilman James?
So is clerk, is the clerk's office presently implementing the recreational marijuana ordinance?
Clerk Doyle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. No. And the reason being is that it was a court challenge, the committee, you made the updates. So we're waiting to see what happens in February. Will we be moving forward with ordinance 2406 that was approved in April? Or will we be moving forward with the amendments to 2406, which is ordinance 2424?
So still paralysis?
Yes.
But it isn't contesting the original enacted ordinance, it's whether the changes will be, will fly or not?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So again, Clerk Doyle, your office did very hard work verifying and validating all the signatures to make sure they reached the, what's spelled out in state law. And so any update you want to give us on that, that...
Actually, is, thank you, Mr. President, it's actually the city charter.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so in the city charter, it spells out how many signatures they need to get, the percentage, et cetera, and that was satisfied. So it meets all the requirements, and this is the final step of us just sort of confirming, yes, this is the election to send it to. Okay? Any further discussion or clarification needed? Pro Tem Carrington?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Just so for the public, as we decide whether this, well, actually, goes to the ballot. So basically, this is only challenging the amended, what, the amendment that we made to the marijuana ordinance, right?
Correct.
So I just wanted to make sure the community knows that if, that they're not voting to get rid of the recreational marijuana ordinance.
That's right. This will not be an up or down verdict on whether there can be adult use recreational marijuana or not. It's basically what, what version will be allowed. And there will be a lot of, you know, we'll put out as much information as we're allowed and permitted about sort of what, what it means, what's the practical application, so that way residents can be informed. Clerk Doyle?
In the proposal, as it will go on the ballot, says, Proposal 1, Ordinance Number 2424, and ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 2406, the City of Pontiac Adult Use Business Ordinance. So it is just on the amendments.
Yeah.
So if you, if you're in favor of the amendments, it would be a yes vote. If you're not, then it would be a no vote.
And for the sake of time, I won't read it all, because it is about three pages, but Proposal 1, it spells out what all those changes were that were adopted in the fall. And so you, you can review that when you receive your ballots, it's going to spell it all out, too. So you get to say, are these changes good or not? And we can share for the community's benefit, they were done to try and add even more protections for residents, to try and clarify the process even further, but it ultimately will be the people's decision. Councilman James?
I was just wondering, this whole thing is going to be on the ballot?
Yes.
All three pages?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
The actual ordinance, because it encompasses the 2406, it's probably about 40 pages. But the clerk's office, and it says, and it will say on the, if you want to see the full ordinance, it'll be available on the clerk's office. But for ballot printing, no. But what is in here, that will be, what will be on the ballot.
Okay.
Yes.
And we recognize that's not the simplest and most fun thing for voters and residents, but we ain't the ones that wrote the ballot proposals, so. All right. So any further clarification needed? Again, we're just, the city charter spells out, the city council has to say what can go on the ballot for proposals or not. Hearing no further discussion, roll call Clerk Doyle on the motion to approve the resolution to approve Proposal 1, Ordinance Number 2424, and ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 2406, City of Pontiac Adult Use Business Ordinance for the February 27, 2024 Presidential Primary Ballot. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James? Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yays, one nay.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted, and with that, that ballot proposal will be on the City of Pontiac voters' ballots on the February 27, 2023, excuse me, 2024 Presidential Primary. So when you choose which ballot you want, no matter what presidential primary you're voting in, it's going to be at, probably the bottom. It would be at the bottom of it.
And voters will, due to President, and voters will also have the option to just request a proposal.
Okay.
Ballot.
So you don't have to vote in either presidential primary?
Right, yes, yes.
Understood. All right. So with that, there is only one ballot proposal that the City of Pontiac is submitting forward. So I don't believe we'll need to adopt this next resolution unless attorneys and clerk tells me otherwise. It would spell out how the ballot question shall appear on the February 27, 2024 Presidential Primary Ballot, including the order. Attorney Tribielcock, is that still necessary?
It's not necessary, given the current status at this point. The only way that would become necessary is if somehow you decided to call another special meeting prior to Tuesday at four o'clock, which I don't think is happening, but that would be the, you just need to designate it then. Thanks.
Okay, so without objection, I won't entertain a motion or a second for this resolution. Well, I'll give the opportunity. Is there a motion or a second for this third, this item number three? Going once, going twice, going three times? Hearing none, there's no such move in support. That concludes the resolutions on our agenda, and we are now at public comment. Because this is a special meeting, we're not doing the full-blown whole order, we won't have closing comments, et cetera. I might allow a point of personal privilege if there's a quick answer we can give to a question that's raised, but it's now time for public comment. Pro Tem, who's up?
Kermit Williams. Dr. Waterman. I'm sorry. Patrice Waterman, no. I'm sorry. Mr. Robert Bass? Please forgive me, Dr. Waterman. You coming up?
Yes.
Microphone, sir.
Robert Bass, Assistant District Counsel. I thank you for the vote. I know it's not a long-lasting vote, because it may come back for a later date, which is, is doable, and we appreciate... which is doable, and we appreciate it. Bottom line is, we want to have information. Yes, we know that we have a choice. However, we need information in order to make an educated voice spoken. If we don't know what we're voting for, we're just voting blind. I don't care if it's just something that you're putting on the ballot. There still should be a preliminary plan. We don't have that. So as a community leader, I can't explain to my people what they don't understand about the ballot proposal. Because I don't even have a preliminary, preliminary proposal or preliminary plan of action. Y'all have had two years to come up with a street plan. The first plan, you said there was no plan when you made a plan. And then you went and changed the plan that you made for that because of the way the money came in from the government. I understand that. I understand you have to make changes and do things different. But we cannot make educated decisions and not have knowledge of what we voted on or speaking to. And that's what y'all are telling us to do when you say that we don't need the information because the council have it. Because the council have it, we all, from all over the district, don't get the information in a timely manner. And it's not because the council's not doing their job. It's because they don't have the time to get to every avenue that's in a collective body of district, or a district. So all I'm saying, I put this to the administration. How many community people do you have on those groups that you have working on the master plan, the parks? How many community people do you have sitting on your, with your departments, working on these plans? And same way with council. How many of your people are on these committees? Or what committees are they on in the administration? They speak for us to give an optimum view of what they're planning or the policies they're making. But we come to public hearings and speak on something that we have no information on. Sometimes it's quick. Sometimes it's right after you plan a town hall. You go to the town hall, you come back, and you vote on what they said at the town hall. But we don't have the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
I live in Fieldstone Village. And one of the things that, first of all, council, I applaud you for your vote tonight. I think you heard the people that were here that they weren't in favor of that bond proposal. And I think we have the same concerns that you do as far as not having the information. And furthermore, I question now the information that is being handed out because Telegraph Road has been repaired. That was shut down in different directions, and that has all been completely fixed. Why is that part of the bond, the road, you know, fixing the roads? Because that's done. So I question by the validity of the information that we're getting, and very little. So before the council votes on another proposal, I would ask that you guys get all the information that you can as far as what's going to be done, the timeframe. And I really agree with you that that should be a lesser amount. Because when you come to the, to the people in Pontiac, I would say the majority of the people in Pontiac can't afford a four percent, or a four-millage vote. And so you need to take a look at their districts and what your districts are saying. So, and the other thing is, is get this information and then share it with your people. Whether you share it here or in your individual precincts, let us know what you want. Because I think you'll get a lot more support from your people if you give them information. Because I'll tell you, when I walked in here today, Irene called me, and whenever she had talked to me and told me what was going on, how in the world can that happen? I mean, this is, this is a democracy. It's not a dictatorship. And if you want something, you got to ask for it, but you got to tell us what you want. Don't just come and say, we want a four-millage, you know, percent vote, you know, increase in your taxes. That's not going to get it. What do you want it for? What's it going to do? How much is it going to cost? And what's it going to fix? Because I'll tell you one thing, right now, I have been in contact with the mayor's office and the city about a road that has not been touched, not been touched. I've been in Fieldstone Village for five years, and I know that my neighbors of that have told me the same thing. It's been months or years before. But Giddings Road, you know when you come into Pontiac because Auburn Hills has done their part. But as soon as you hit that line, you know you're in Pontiac. And the bridge by the creek over there is, I mean, it's really terrible. The city has come out and repaired it just to get by. But I mean, it's nowhere's near where it should be.
That does conclude your time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. I said about the process, and I want to start there. Well, let me, let me hit the couple of items first. I think Councilwoman James spoke about a study that was approved. Evidently, that study has not been stimulated between you guys. We haven't seen any parts of that study. I agree, if it was a study put together, we should be able to see that study and know that study. So when we do things like this, there's a process that needs to go through. We okay a study? Come on back, let's see what that study say. The second thing that disturbing is, nothing in this piece talked about that facility. We had to ask tonight, how much that facility going to cost? I mean, it's like, come on, administration, tell us what it's going to cost. That mean that's $10 million worth of less roads we're not going to be able to do because we put that facility in there. But I think that number, I looked over, I didn't see that $10 million number in there. So these things need to be spoke of in a way that we understand what is the actual cost and what we trying, what are we trying to propose? I agree, we need to do something with our streets. That's been going on a long time. Our street's been bad a long time. So just to rush and say, we got to hit it right now, that doesn't make sense to a lot of us. So we got to come around with that. Now, here's the process that I think I keep seeing going on. This right here is going to go to council leadership. Council, I know you don't like, you don't like to say no. But sometimes you waste a lot of our time trying to do something on the floor. That shouldn't happen. I'm glad to see they stopped it tonight. You should not, because if our council people do not get a chance to see information and come back to us, you have voided the process of having us as citizens talk to our elected officials. When they get information, and I'm talking about council president, you cannot go through and try to dissect information on the floor. Council people haven't got a chance to see it. They haven't got a chance to talk to their constituents. That's not the way it's supposed to go. So as much as you want to try to keep peace and order, I believe in that. But let's do everything in an orderly way. Let's do it all in an orderly way. That's out of order. Trying to do something on the floor and change it to get it voted on that night without council people getting a chance to come back to their constituents and say, here's what we thinking about doing, then we can collectively vote on things. That's not the way we should be doing things around here. And we need to stop doing it that way. It's not the council people's decision on their own. They are representing us as citizens. So you should always say, have you got a chance to go back and talk to your citizens in your district? And if we not doing that, we going to continuously have problems in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I think the council are voting no. Thank you for that. But there, let me throw some things out there. I guess you should know that I'm not for tax abatements. Why? Because the rest of us has to take up the slack for that. How many tax abatements have you given out? There are 30 years. I left in 2005, in 95, we did a real appraisal. And downtown has never been up to the value that it's supposed to be. What about all those tax dollars we could be getting if you did something like that? To look at those tax payments, downtown was obsolete. You also have your Tiffes down there. Money goes back into those areas, so they shouldn't even be included in the roads. I know it's supposed to be infrastructure, okay? But another thing that could be done is, and for those of us who want our streets done now as opposed to waiting to get into the plan, you could do special assessments to the property. I would prefer a special assessment to my property for my road in front of me as opposed to 30 years of higher taxes. You have other options, which I don't think they've been viewed. And I'm trying to get my child to come back to Pontiac, one of them anyway. He says there's nothing to offer. Since '70, you've been working on that downtown area. You pushed all, not you, they pushed all the young business owners out and put in entertainment. Has that worked in 40 years? You need to change your idea. You need more family things down there. And I've been to other cities that are like ours, and they've got small businesses there. Not all entertainment. Nobody goes downtown. Outsiders come in on the weekends. The other thing, if you gave a tax abatement, charged that part of the road back to business, you got other options. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Dr. Waterman.
Well, council, you've had an earful tonight. But the sum total is, I'm glad you weren't bullied into making a decision on the basis of improperly prepared information and that we're not maybe decided in the best interest of the people. So thank you for that. And that's just, we've seen it done before, previous times. And so tonight, I think you held your ground and said, hey, look, we're not going to do something that is not well thought out and that there isn't a plan that you can explain to the people. And just the arguments that were disseminated as rebuttal, if I heard from the front table. I mean, it's not that we know our seats bad. We drive them all the time. So you don't have to tell us the streets are bad. We know. But the question is, what is the plan for getting it done? What is the wrong long-range capital improvement? And it's not done by knee-jerk reactions and just, okay, we're going to change this, we're going to do this, and come up with the numbers at the top of your head. It's by having a plan. That's what administration should be working out. And they did you wrong by not getting that plan worked out and thought out and presented in a better way than it was tonight. I see the gentlemen who were here, the consultants from Miller Canfield and Baird, were going to try to help to blow you out. They knew there were other options. There were other options, and they were going to present them tonight. But you know, that's not the way you should decide something of this importance. Just have people come up with things at the last minute and tell you piecemeal about it. They're willing to do that. That's what they did for the school district, and that's what they've done at other times, you know? I hired them to give us a credit rating. But they hadn't been asked to do it, and so they weren't prepared. That's what they can do for you for the next time, so we can see what is the best option. There are alternatives. There's different ways to do things. I also heard one of the council people said, we just want to put it on the ballot. I think Deputy Stevens, we just want to put it on the, it's the people's choice. But the thing is, if you put it on the ballot, that means you are recommending it. I assume you wouldn't put something on the ballot that you don't recommend. So it means that you were, you would have been recommending this plan because that's what would be put on the ballot. So don't try to pass the book by saying, oh, it's the people's choice anyway. Yeah, the people's choice, we know it's our choice. But the question is, if you would be recommending this plan? So there are other alternatives, other ways to doing it. There has not been that discussion that needs to be done. We need to get the roads fixed, that's right. But going through a knee-jerk reaction and just deciding on the basis of limited information and false information, some of it, is not the way that you owe the people and respect the people in terms of making their community improved.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. Mr. Chuck Johnson. Larry Jasper on deck.
Thank you very much, Chuck Johnson, again. You know, kudos to the council for your vote tonight. And I also want to say kudos to you, Reverend, Councilman Parker, because without your input, along with the council's input, then we wouldn't have had a collaboration of thoughts. And that's very important, even though you were outside of the group. You didn't say yes like you should. But anyways, our roads is not going to get any better over the next five or six years or 10 years until Oakland County comes and finish buying the city of Pontiac like they're doing. Oakland County is buying this city the way they wanted to do 25 years ago, but now it's come to fruition. If Oakland County wants to buy this city, let them fix the roads because they have way more money than us few taxpayers here in the city of Pontiac. Let them bring some of that North Oakland County money that they're getting and spend it in Pontiac like they should have been doing years ago. As far as Telegraph Road is concerned, Telegraph Road, the part that's on that document is in the purview of Oakland County because now Oakland County controls Hawthorne Park, and they ain't going to let that road go in a deplorable condition with their name on that park. Trust me. So ladies and gentlemen, thanks all of you for coming out. I agree with you wholeheartedly. We have to stand fast. We have to stand up and be counted. We can't continue sitting back and allow, we respect the administration, individuals just bringing these ideas and plans to this city, and they never come to fruition. It's always a money grab, and it's coming out of the pockets of us. And it's too late for that kind of game. I'm going to give it another name. It's a cat and mouse game. If you want to play the cat and mouse game, then we not going to be the mouse because the cat not going to get us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Well, I want to say that I'm really grateful the council took a serious look at this and realized it was just too fast, too soon. You don't get married in one day, even at first sight. It takes a year. And I think that there was a lot of discussion up front here at the council and various ideas. But I wouldn't throw it away. What I would tell you is that November 2024 is soon enough, and it would start next year. There is other multiple scenarios. I don't think you guys remember, you know, a lot of people think, well, you don't live in Pontiac. Well, I want to make one thing clear here. In 2008, there was a development called Bloomfield Park. It's now called Plumfield Village. That was initiated. It was shut down, not because the guy ran out of money. It was a $20 billion operation that had nine PUDs going on systematically, simultaneously. It was shut down because somebody in the political field decided to do a traffic count and said that the streets need to be widened by four feet, which meant and said that the streets needed to be widened by four feet, which meant they had to tear down two hundred million dollars to start over, and they refused to do it, they decided to take a write-off. I was brought into the project around two twelve, two fourteen. I went to New York, and I had three investors willing to put five hundred million dollars into the city of Pontiac. Unfortunately, I didn't know who was there at the time, and they had been working with Oakland County and Redico. Redico, which owns Bloomfield Park, it's called American Housing, they got all these condos, they got this tax abatement, but understand that Bloomfield Township owned Telegraph Road. The reason they gave it to Pontiac is so they'd get rid of the legal documents. I got a call in New York telling me that I couldn't go through it with a FOIA until they took out the legal documents, and I said, that's pretty sad, because I got investors looking at five hundred million dollars, you're gonna have to get a quarter. That's when I found those documents. When they gave Telegraph to Pontiac, they gave, the ex-mayor gave a thirty-five-year tax abatement. That's two million dollars a year the city of Pontiac should have been getting since, what, two thousand and sixteen? How many roads were that fixed? The point is, is I brought to this council before you guys came here, a partnership where we could see dividends going to the, the citizens. The citizens can't afford, and stock ownership of the downtown development, this still can be happening, we could still bring Oakland County and Bloomfield Township and Pontiac together and cut in the citizens for a ten percent ownership, which would give them a couple hundred dollars every quarter. If you're on your social security, you can't afford your electric bill, your water bill, food, or Medicare, let alone another two to five hundred dollars, but we can work on this, we can put it all together, and I guarantee you, it could work where the citizens wouldn't have to make the money come out of their pockets. It would be a combination that would benefit all of Oakland County, would benefit Bloomfield Hills and Pontiac simultaneously. I've been trying to get this in front of you, and that's why I filed this lawsuit, because all this stuff, they've attacked me for two years, that's why you haven't seen me. They attacked my family in a major situation, but I'm back. Thank you for taking care of the citizens.
Ms. Darlene Clark, and then Ms. Gloria Miller.
Good afternoon, um, council and mayor administration. I'm gonna take my first minute and explain to you, I passed out to you a package of a situation that occurred on recording versus council meeting on the twenty-first. At the end of that meeting, we have a confrontation between Chuck Johnson, Cassandra Bradford, um, and Melanie Rufford. Now, after the confrontation, there were some serious accusations and endowindles made by Chuck Johnson that was very unappropriate. Understand this, I do have it fully on recording, so if you council people want to hear what was said, because it was very deplorable for a council person to address, to let a person even address a situation like that. Melanie Rufford did on the twenty-seventh file a police report to say that she put a PP order against Gloria Miller, Darlene Clark, and Cassandra Bradford. I in turn, my office checked with the clerk at the Oakland County, and there is no PP order. Um, in front of you, you have a copy of that. So Melanie Rufford once again has misled the council into thinking something that does not exist, to protect her own narcissism, and I'm very, I have been very frank and upfront with her, she is a narcissist. Now, back to this, and this is directly to the mayor and the council, please hear what I'm telling this mayor and the people as well. Mayor, it's not that the people don't want to trust you, actually, you were their great hope coming into office. The people thought for the change that the former mayor, the things that she done, had actually took the city down. They were relying on you, your hope, on you to help bring it up. But what happened in your mistake that you did, you came here and you, you know how you say when you're running muck, which mean when you run too fast, you tend to miss a lot of things going by because you're running so fast? See, the road runner didn't run the race, the tourists run the race, won the race. Mayor, you said that you fixed some streets, you pet yourself on the back, and you did, but you didn't fix the whole street. Yes, you did fix Pike Street, a section, that's not the whole street, so we still have the problem. Yes, you are fixing Franklin Road badly, and all these streets that was before us, but what the problem is, you're doing it all at the same time, where you congesting and pushing everybody into a huddle. Trucks are driving into the residential neighborhood and all our properties getting lost because they don't know how to get out. The science that's there is not enough. So it's not your intention, you're running so fast across the race that you're trying to win, that you're missing over so much. You also said that you promised to help the people get the gurds two years ago, to get these people their retirement money. Mayor, these people work hard for this money. My mother died not getting her insurance and her money, but guess what, mayor? She had a family that helped her stay atop, but look at the ones who don't. The promises that you made to the people, you halfway done it. You started it, but you didn't finish it. Mayor, you have a council that constantly say, yes, yes, you want us to trust you? Let me tell you this, people like my family, there's other families that help make Pontiac, we are the power, because when we pick up their phone and say, help, they there. And what we're saying to you as residents in Pontiac, taxpayers, you have to rely on us to give you what you want, but we don't trust you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, and Ms. Gloria Miller.
Thank you, Darlene. You know, I was out in the hall talking to some, uh, some of my citizens in Pontiac, and this older gentleman walked up to me, you know, I don't know people, but I know them, you know what I'm saying? We just know each other. I'd be, I could be out in another city, and they'd walk up to me, how you doing? I breathe, and we was talking in the hall, and I was telling them how I breathe Pontiac, I love Pontiac. Even if some of them don't love me, I still love them, that's on them, they gotta answer God for theirself, because believe it or not, I'm, I am a godly person, because if I wasn't, I probably would have beat up a lot of people up in here if I wasn't, if I was like I used to be, the things that going in here. And I say this, I was fighting tooth and nail when I see a senior in this city being done wrong, because there's things that God have given me the gift to do, that know when you're doing wrong, I can't take it back to my people and live next door to them and knowing that you cutting it back. I gotta, I gotta die for this. So on my grave, where probably you won't be there, that's okay, I don't need you, I wanna say, let my work speak for itself. I never took a dime from anyone, I never did any backdoor deals, I don't do anything for money, I'm not getting paid to come down here. I use everything on my own, because I do it from my heart, because I love my people. We been through a lot. We had been through three emergency managers, they treated us like dirt. We had no, no, I never thought I'd live slavery, it was slavery. The emergency manager would tell you to walk away, get away from me. You had no rights, we were suspended. And so where my passion come from? I still got it. I wanna organize people in Pontiac, we gotta organize. This body don't listen to us. They're trying to take us down. I walked in City Hall today, come down Pontiac, look at the rug on the floor, it got that mess on it, no chief on it anymore, it got Oakland County on the floor. Okay? They trying to take us. They trying to take us. Come on Pontiac, let's, we gotta organize. Yes, Parker, you just showed that you don't know a damn thing about Pontiac. That's what you just showed. I know my District Five, yes, you got your nice neighborhoods over there, I love them, I know a lot of them, but I don't believe that they wanna take the little people down to, to make it for the big people. The little people can't sustain it. They don't have the wherewithal to pay these taxes. So what gonna happen to them? They gonna lose their homes, that they worked for all their lives, sitting on their little porch, trying to just make a little dollar. That's what bothers me with this council, you guys don't recognize your people that you're working for up there. I grew up in your, your neighborhood, McGinnis, I grew up on the east side of town, they can't afford it. You did the right thing. I don't want to congratulate you no more, 'cause next week you probably do something different again, so I'm just gonna hold reserve, okay? 'Cause I'm a woman like this, you do something one for me good, that ain't gonna buy me, you don't buy me easily. I don't come, I don't come cheap. So sorry, I'm not gonna congratulate you, you just doing your job. Stay with your people, you'll stay with me, and you'll leave, I won't even come down here, but when you leave the people, I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Irene Wright.
Hi, just a few closing comments. I think I said the last time I was here, what God has given you, much is expected, and tonight you've shown that. First of all, mayor, I want you to know that it is not a negative vote on your part from us. We have to stand our ground. We are individuals who have been here for a long time. One of the things that I've seen, and I said this to, um, Councilman James, I don't expect to come down here because I want to make sure you guys have enough opportunity to do your job. I said that at least two years, but today I had to come down. I had to come down even though I had been sick in the hospital and everything else, because it was not right. Mayor, I think you need to understand that Pontiac has been in existence for a long time. It is not our job to tell you how to do your job, but one of the things that I would like to say to you is to consider putting together what's called a think tank. A think tank is not what you are saying you want, but listening to the people, because it's a lot of us that has your back. Now, some people will say, why are you saying that? Because I have your back. But when you do things that's not in what I think is correct, I'm gonna tell you that, not because I don't like you, not because I do like you, it's because it's the right thing that I can do. And when you surround yourself with good people, make sure you are surrounding yourself with people who are going to give you the best advice, because if you are surrounding yourself with-
Order in the chambers, order in the chambers, the citizen has the floor and only the citizen. Ms. Irene Wright, beautiful voice will be the only voice we're hearing during her time.
With people who are just telling you what you want to hear, a strong leader surrounds himself with very qualified people, even more qualified than themselves. And so to the council, I'll say to you, you know, what you did today really said, you listened to us. You know, you may not always are in this time agreed with it, because I know we have to do something. We have to do something for our roads, but sometimes you're taking on too much, and I think this was one of those times when it was just too much. Give us an opportunity to work with you, but again, think about looking at a lot of people in this and getting a think tank. Not that you're telling them what to do, but they're coming back telling you that this is what we talked to the people, and this is what they said. There's no way anything should have been done without, first of all, listening to the people. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Wright, that concludes, uh, public comment.
All right. All right, with that, uh, that concludes, uh, um, the items on our agenda. Deputy Mayor Stevens, you wanted a quick, quick word?
Um, thank you, Council President. Uh, I just wanna thank the council for, um, for the special meeting tonight, thank the public, and I want to let everyone know, so everyone who's in the chambers, this is not for the people watching, everyone who's in the chambers, please do not use the elevator tonight. Um, it is having a, um, technical difficulty, and although the door is open, do not use the elevator tonight. Thank you.
We all are one accord with that? We're gonna earn a few more steps, we're taking only the stairs tonight. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington, that we adjourn this evening's special meeting. Hearing no discussion, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
At eight twenty-eight PM, we do stand adjourned. Thank you to council members for making this time, this was an added obligation upon your already busy weeks, thank you.